In the year 1143 CE, Noor Deen al-Zengi was attempting to recapture... Recapture what? Al-Quds, Masjid al-Aqsa, because it was in the hands of the Salabiyyeen, the Crusaders. And there was a fear amongst the Crusaders that he might be successful. This fear trickled all the way to Europe. And one of the senior leaders of the Church in France, his name was Peter the Venerable. He was an abbot, one of the senior members of the Church, not quite a bishop underneath the bishop. And he's very well-known in history. He was an intellectual, he was a thinker, he was a writer, he was an activist, he's well-known. Peter the Venerable said, "We need to do something. We cannot let the Muslims reconquer Quds." What is he gonna do in France? He said, "We need to start converting the Muslims, so that they no longer pose a threat to us. We must convert the people in that region, the Muslims and Palestinians. We must make them into Christians." But how will we do this? Well, the first thing he said, "We need to know what they believe." So, he decided, "We must first and foremost study what Islam is." This is the first attempt in human history from the Western world to try to study Islam semi-seriously, little bit of intellectual, little bit of thought. And so, where's he gonna go? He's in France. Nobody speaks Arabic in France. What's he gonna do? He traveled to Andalus. Andalus at this time was completely controlled by the Muslims. This is now 1143. Not just Grenada, you have Quortoba, you have Valencia, you have Sevilla, Seville. You have the entire southern Andalus, the entire southern Spain is in Muslim land. One city, only one, had fallen and was in the hands of the Christians, and that was Toledo. Toledo had already fallen by this time, 1085 I think, Toledo had fallen. And Toledo, King Alfonso was ruling Toledo. And King Alfonso was one of the few Western rulers who spoke fluent Arabic as a Western Christian. He spoke fluent Arabic, and he admired Islam. And Arabic was an official language in his court. And he allowed Muslims their independence in Toledo. This is not Toledo, Ohio. Guys, this is Toledo? Spain. Toledo, Ohio is named after Toledo, Spain, Toledo. So, Alfonso had a very open policy. Muslims flourished, madarists flourished, and Christians were the ones in charge. The only place in the Western world which Christians ruled and Muslims had freedom. As for Muslims ruling and Christians having freedom, that's everywhere. But in the Western world, the only place was Toledo. So, our guy, Peter the Venerable, goes to Toledo. And in Toledo were all of the international students from the West to study medicine, to study mathematics, to study chemia, chemistry, algebra, hisab, al-jabr wa al-hisab, all of these sciences, whose books were in Arabic, they were being taught to Westerners in Toledo. Because once upon a time, Christians would come to Muslim lands to study. Because that's how it was. The Muslims had a superior civilization. Tlibb, medicine was in Islamic hands, astronomy, geometry, everything was in Arabic. So where would non-Muslims go to study? Toledo became the intellectual capital of Westerners to come study all of the sciences in the Arabic language, just like all of us who are not born here. We had to learn English and come study over here. We study engineering here, medicine here, PhDs here. Once upon a time, it was flipped around. So, our guy, Peter the Venerable, comes to Toledo. And he goes to the king, and he goes to the institutes, and their most prestigious institute. He said, "Who is your best student that I can hire? I got a lot of money, the church is behind me. Give me your best student, because I have a project that is gonna change the course of history." So they said, "We have somebody from England." It wasn't called United Kingdom back then. "We have somebody, his name is Robert, Robert of Ketan." Ketan is northwest of London, it's a small little village. Back then, you would be called by your Qadiya, Robert of Ketan. "We have this student from England, he is top-notch. He speaks fluent Arabic, he's studied medicine, astronomy, he's our top student." So, Peter the Venerable says to him, "Forget your medicine career, forget everything. I'm gonna hire you. You will be in charge of the team to translate the Quran." And other books as well, but the Quran was number one of those. He translated other books, Al-Akkindi and others, they translated these books. So, he agreed, obviously, good sum of money, why not? This is the career now, right? So Robert of Ketan then changed his career path. He opened up, if you like, a Tarjama Institute in Toledo. This is the first Tarjama Institute, the first translation movement from Arabic to Latin. This is the first time the Ulum, all of the sciences, will be translated from Arabic into Latin. And the first book that they translated was the Quran. And so, Peter the Venerable commissioned, flew us money, paid massive sum of money to this guy, Robert of Ketan, to translate the entire Quran. Mr. Robert found some sheikh, some alim, we don't know his name. We know he found a proper sheikh, because, a bit complicated here, but basically, that sheikh helped him with Tafsir al-Baidawi and other tafsirs, that they took the tafsir. And Robert of Ketan then, for the first time in human history, translated the Quran from Arabic into the first time a Western language. This is 1143, a Western language. Robert of Ketan translated Quran from English to Arabic to Latin. By the way, before this, of course, the translations had happened in Farsi. We have hundreds of manuscripts, 200, 300 Hijra, where in the margins, you have Farsi, you have various, you know, 500, 600, you have Turkish languages. So you have, you know, various languages. Of course, our own guy as well, in India. Shah Waleel al-Dihlavi famously translated to Farsi as well. His son translated to Urdu for the first time. So in the Muslim world, all of this is happening. In the Western world, this is the first time, 1143, Robert of Ketan. And this translation became a bestseller in manuscript form, there is no printing press. And in 1453, Mr. Gutenberg comes along and invents the printing press. The first book he publishes is what? The Bible. The Bible is the first book he publishes. Not the second, but the fourth or fifth or sixth book in the top 10. Of the top 10 books he publishes is the Quran. Not because he loved Islam, not because he... But there is this point, we need to convert the Muslim world. The same Peter the Venerable mentality, 300 years later, when Gutenberg invents the printing press, one of the first books that is printed and published is Mr. Robert of Ketan's Latin translation of the Quran. He does that not because he loves Islam, but because they feel that the only way to convert the Ummah is by studying their teachings. That we know what to speak, then we can begin converting to them. Of course, all of this project failed miserably. They never converted a single city, a single town. This just kalamfadi, this not gonna happen. But anyway, point is, this translation spread like wildfire, now is being printed. And it generated many translations. In 1653, Alexandre de Russell, let me get the name here. Alexandre de Russell translated it into French. And then, in 1655, from that French translation, somebody who spoke French and English translated it for the first time into the English language. 1647, Andre Dourire, Andre Dourire was the first person to translate the Quran from, not from Arabic, not from Latin, from French. Look at the long isnad. The English translation from the French, from the Latin, from the Arabic. This is the first time the Quran was translated into English, 1647. The guy never spoke a word of Arabic, he only spoke French. The French guy used the Latin. The French guy also didn't speak Arabic that well. So this is the isnad of the first translation that was done into English, 1647. 70 years later, an intellectual by the name of George Sale, who was somebody who was called a humanist at the time. He wasn't a Christian, he was an open-minded thinker, and he wanted to study other religions and other trends. And he decided to self-teach himself Arabic in England. Taught himself Arabic. He literally purchased Arabic Nahu books in Latin. Taught himself Arabic, and started translating the Quran primarily based upon Robert of Ketan, the Latin, but also using the Arabic. And this is called the George Sale translation of the Quran in 1734. And this is a copy of that Quran. I have one published 1830 something, this is like 160, 170 years old. This is one of the older prints that I have. So this is George Sale's Quran, uh, translation, sorry. And George Sale's translation became the only and most popular translation for 300 years. You've all heard Thomas Jefferson had a copy of the Quran in his library. This is the copy that he had, well, not this, this copy, but this translation, I mean, right? I don't have Thomas Jefferson's actual copy. I have seen it in his library in DC. But this is the translation that he had, George Sale's translation. And all of the luminaries, intellectual giants of the time who read the Quran, they read George Sale's translation. And George Sale's translation is also based primarily on Robert of Ketan, but he also learned some Arabic, so there's some direct translation done as well. Other translations came about, almost all of them by people who are not qualified. Then, in around 1910 or so, for the very first time, Muslims began translating into English. This is 100 years old. The whole project of translating the Quran into English by Muslims is barely 100 years old. Before this point in time, it's all non-Muslims doing it, right? Over 120 translations have happened in the English language by Muslims and non-Muslims. In the last 300 years, over 120 translations have happened. But all of this 120, 90% of them are in the last 30 years. Before that, very slow. The first translation that was done by a Muslim, quote-unquote Muslim, put it in quotation marks, was a translation done by Maulana Muhammad Ali. And Maulana Muhammad Ali, the Pakistanis know of him. He was a part of the Lahorei Ahmadi branch. And he became, was he the Foreign Minister or something of Pakistan, something like that? Back in the 40s, that guy, right? Foreign Minister, something. Anyway, you all know him if you study your history. Now, why would the Lahorei branch, why would the Qadiyani's translate the Quran? Well, you have to realize, these minority groups, all of them, the minority groups generally speaking, they are trying to fight for survival. And so they are highly educated. Generally, when you're a minority group, you're pushing for survival. So as it is, they're highly educated, they're being sent to England, Cambridge, right? As it is, they need to defend themselves doubly, not just against non-Muslims, but even against fellow Muslims. And so they're financing projects, they're more cohesive network. So, this guy, Muhammad Ali, who was part of the Lahorei Qadiyani branch, he was the one, for the first time, a pseudo-Muslim, because again, you know Lahorei branch has its issues, to translate the Quran from a more sympathetic perspective. This is Muhammad Ali from the Lahorei branch. Now, after this, the Dharayabad, the others came along. Now, why India? Why all of, almost all of them from India? Almost all of them. Why? Because India is the place where the British are ruling, and English becomes the primary language of the nobility and elite of the Muslims. Not in Egypt, even though the British nominally ruled, but Egypt doesn't speak English as a default. Everybody in India, to this day, Indian, Pakistan, we speak English. It's our national, in India, one of the national languages is English. Why? Because the British were ruling directly over that land. And therefore, it was the Indian Muslims who began translating the Quran directly into English. After Muhammad Ali, after Muhammad Ali, the Navab of Hyderabad, I gave money lectures about him. The richest man in the world at the time. Forget Bill Gates, forget, the Navab of Hyderabad, he's one of the richest men in human history. The Navab of Hyderabad decided he wants to translate the Quran. So, he said, "Who should we call for this?" They said, "Oh, there's this British intellectual convert. There's this, you know, white Caucasian guy, he's converted to Islam. You should tell him to translate the Quran." "Oh, who is he? Where is he?" "His name is Marmaduke Pichtall." So he said, "Khalas, I'm gonna get him." "He's not gonna come to Hyderabad from England? Don't worry, I'll get him." And he got him. There's Fayed of having civilizational wealth, guys, when you have it, not a problem. Marmaduke Pichtall moved to, Masha Allah, Hyderabad. This is what happens when you are the Navab of, okay, of Hyderabad. So Marmaduke Pichtall moved to Hyderabad. And from there, he traveled to Egypt to study with scholars of Azhar, so that he could actually understand Arabic better, so that he could translate the Quran as authentic and as accurate as possible. That was his project. And for those of you who grew up in my generation, you all knew Pichtall's translation as well. But Pichtall's translation, because Marmaduke Pichtall was from an upper-class British family, so his education was like 17th century English, whatever. The English is over our heads. The English, he wanted to make it dramatic English, Shakespearean English. So anybody who reads Marmaduke Pichtall, As'awam, cannot understand Marmaduke Pichtall. But because of his education, he wanted to bring Izzah to the Quran through his style. But that style is, you know, Khabar Khan has gone. So, Marmaduke Pichtall's translation also, it was popular, but it never gained transit... You know, it never gained prestige amongst the people. Another guy comes along. Somebody whom you've all heard of, or at least the older, you know, the younger kids have no idea of these names. They've never heard of them. All of us, 35 and older, we know these names because we grew up with them. Abdullah Yusuf Ali. Abdullah Yusuf Ali was born in a Buhra Ismaili family, he wasn't Sunni. He was in a Buhra family. And he didn't speak Arabic, he graduated from Aligarh, he studied at Aligarh. He went to Cambridge, studied law. So he's very upper-class, posh person, Abdullah Yusuf Ali. He was also friends with our guy, Jinnah. Jinnah liked him a lot, and Jinnah gave him a job. Jinnah gave him a job to be a principal of some other, or something, school, not mothers, a school. So Abdullah Yusuf Ali is now walking in the intelligentsia of the British and the Muslim elites, and he wants to also do khidmah to the Deen. Now, this is a little bit controversial, may Allah bless and reward him, these are facts. I'm not trying to be negative here. Awkward to say this, Abdullah Yusuf Ali, not just was he not a scholar, he didn't really speak Arabic at all. Because he's born in a Buhra family, Buhra, Ismaili. He's never trained, you know, he could barely read Arabic, much less understand it. He was not at all qualified to do any of this. But he's very popular and famous as a graduate of Cambridge back in 1920. I mean, imagine, you know, he's one of the first Indian Muslim graduates of Cambridge, law, barrister. Very popular, but he's not a scholar, he doesn't know Arabic. But he is popular amongst the people, Jinnah is his friend, whatever. So what does he do? This is awkward to say, but this is factually correct, I'm not making a judgment. He basically takes Maulana, Muhammad Ali's translation, right? He takes Muhammad Ali's translation, and basically, he plagiarizes it. Don't trust me, go do your own research and compare. Go look at Muhammad Ali and then Yusuf Ali. And Muhammad Ali predates Yusuf Ali by like 20 years. Go and compare. And you will find, he might have changed one word in maybe 100. But basically, because Muhammad Ali is coming from the Qadiyani, the Sunnis are like, "We don't want anything to do with this." You know, they don't want this translation. So Abdullah Yusuf Ali outwardly says, "I'm Sunni now." And we leave his affair to Allah, he claimed he's Sunni, but we know his background is Buri. It's well-known, even his name and his family, everybody knows this. By the way, sad story, he married a Christian lady, he had four or five kids in England. They all left Islam, his wife left him as well. He died a very sad death on the road in London, nobody recognized him. The police found his death, but it's a very sad story. In 1950, they found his ID, they contacted the Pakistan Embassy, like, "There's somebody here. Looks like he's one of your guys," you know? And the Pakistan Embassy basically sponsored him to be buried in the first cemetery in London. That's a Muslim cemetery, it's a very tragic story. He died a very sad death, alone, abandoned, whatever. May Allah, I mean, may Allah forgive him and grant him Jannah, we have nothing against him. But factually speaking, he copied the translation of Muhammad Ali, and he passed it on his own because his language was simpler, number one. Number two, because it was allegedly by a Sunni, this is the one that was adopted by the Muslim world for over 60 years. It became the default translation for our generation, my generation. And anybody grew up in the 70s, you know this translation. This was the default. But of course, it's not the best, it has its issues. Since then, multiple translations have occurred, literally over, at least 60 by Muslims since the last 50 years. And one of these translations is the one by our dear friend, Sheikh, mentor, sitting next to me. And this is the clear Quran by Mustafa Khattab. Sheikh al-Fadl Huna. Mustafa Khattab and I would go back a long time, believe it or not. We actually met in 2002 or 2003, when I was still in Medina. And Egyptian, there was an Islamic channel called Fajr. And they wanted to have a Tajweed program. So they told me to come down to Egypt to do a Tajweed, so you still find it online, it's called The Nobles. So you can listen, you can find it. I'm a much younger man, no white hair, actually, much bigger beard, yes, that's the bigger beard, yeah, that's one. That's that old version of me. So this is 2003. And they wanted to have some students that spoke English. And our sheikh was studying at Al-Azhar, I was studying at Medina. So I came to Cairo, and one of the four or five students they chose was Sheikh Mustafa. So even though I didn't teach him Tajweed, because it was a fake thing, like, it's his studio. It's his studio, right? So he is a sheikh, and I'm also coming as, so the illusion is, he's my student, but he's not my student. Like, it's like, we were sitting like this. So if you look at the video, you will find him with no white hair, full beard. You will find me, no white hair, full beard. And you will find this 25 years ago. And then I met him again, unbelievably coincidentally, in the Haram al-Makki, in Salaat al-Tarawiyah, when Sudees and Shiraim were reciting in Salaat al-Tarawiyah in 2004. It was my last year in Medina, I had gone to Mecca for Tarawiyah. And at the time, we were involved, all of us, we were involved with the translation projects of the Haram. I was, somebody was talking to me about potentially translating the Khutbahs of the Haram, right? There was a project at the time to translate the Khutbahs live. The upper people vetoed it, but the lower people were very happy. You get my point here. The powers vetoed it, right? But everybody else was very happy. If that had happened, Subhanallah, I would have been sitting in a private room in the Haram while the Khateeb is doing it. That's literally, that was the contract, we were about to sign the contract, right? So I was involved with the Khutbah project, and our sheikh was involved with the Tarawiyah project. What is the Tarawiyah? So they allowed his, they vetoed mine. No Khutbah. Now there is translation, but back then, we were gonna do live translation. They vetoed live translation, right? That didn't happen. So now it's a different system. So I was involved with that project, it didn't go through. He was involved with another project. What was that project? Live translation of the Quran for the first time in human history. The government sponsored live translation as Sheikh Sudees is reading. While he's reading, at the bottom of the screen, there's gonna be an English guy, a French guy, was there German, Italian, I don't know what else, right? Multiple people being broadcast across the world. When the Qadri moves to another verse, he's gonna click the next one, the next line. Of course, his pre, put in, the translation put in, right? Was it Abdullah Yusuf Ali at the time, or somebody? You did your own, so you already had a pre-prototype, okay. So this is where he began the project, right? So that's where I bumped into him over there, and he shook, took me to the room where they were doing this, Masha Allah. And the next thing I hear, Masha Allah, he's come out with this book, the translation. And I ordered a copy, this is before he gifted me my copy, he's gonna do that Insha Allah later on. Just kidding, half kidding. I ordered my copy, and listen, guys, I don't believe in hyping or being melodramatic or whatnot. I'm being very factual here, as Allah is my witness. I honestly found this translation to be one of the best and easiest translations. I'm not just saying this because our sheikh is sitting here, because I have connections with him. I'm being very factual here. There is no translation that is perfect, it's impossible, he will also tell you that. You, La tabdil al-khalimah al, you cannot change the Book of Allah to another language, you can't. Every translation will have here and there. But if you want to know my opinion, you should have at least two or three translations on your shelf. One of them is this one, without a doubt. This, I say unequivocally, without any mujammal, any type of, you know, I'm saying it factually speaking, that Masha Allah, Sheikh Mustafa did an original job. Look, I can tell when somebody just copies and pastes from other translations versus somebody who reads the tafsirs, who goes back and re-does. I know, because I go to specific verses that are very difficult to translate. And I did this, I don't think you know this. Soon as I got this translation, first thing I did, I looked up those three, four, five verses that I know. Everybody messes up, right? And Masha Allah, I was very happy that clearly Sheikh Mustafa has gone to the original tafsirs and thought about what is the best way to convey, and done an amazing job. So without a doubt, this is one of the essential translations you should have, especially for the children and youth, this one would be number one. For college kids, number one, because it's a clear Quran. And for other aspects, there are other translations, have to be honest, you have to look at them as well. Some of them are different, each one has a niche. Without a doubt, this is one of the best. And with this, I want to hand it over to our sheikh to tell us the story of this translation, and also the fact that now this translation is being printed over a million times a year. And you can, Insha Allah, help spread the Book of Allah to other people in this regard.
Zakaumullah Khair, Dr. Yasser, Sheikh Bajoor. May Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, reward you for hosting us and welcoming us. Insha Allah, I'll give you a little bit of background of the clear Quran translation. I just need 10 minutes of your time. My biggest motivation in life, I'm from Egypt, but I love biryani so much. This is why I speak Urdu, Alhamdulillah. In Urdu, we say, "Zindaki bahut mukhtasar hai." Life is very short. Wallahi, once he keep this in your mind, it will motivate you to do as much as you can in the little time that you have. So far, Alhamdulillah, I've translated the Quran five different times in the English language. But I have to tell you my story with my mother in relation to the clear Quran. So my story with the clear Quran goes back to the year 1984, 1984. I was born in a small village in Egypt. I was not supposed to go to school. My father was totally against it. He told me, "Dude, you were born a farmer, you will die a farmer, that's it." That was his plan for me. But my mother, may Allah bless her with a long and healthy and happy life, she put up a big fight with my father. So she told him, "It's very shameful that we have a big family, and no one in the family could read or write." Have Rahmah. So eventually, he let me go to Al-Azhar in a different village. We didn't have a school in my village in Munufiyah, Egypt. So we used to walk one hour in the morning, one hour back. By the age of 12, I completed my Hifdhul Quran. 1997 was a big year for me. I was 20 years old, so I left the village, I moved to Cairo to study Islam at Al-Azhar in English. Good. Not good. Why? Because I didn't speak any English before the age of 20. As the sheikh said, in Egypt, we speak English with an accent. Of course, we have excellent teachers at Al-Azhar, but I was not lucky to study English with one of the best teachers. So let me give you a flavor of my suffering with the English language in college. So they taught us in high school to say, "Stu-mach" instead of stomach. Stu-mach. My biryani is very delicous instead of delicious. I have extensive ex-appearance instead of experience. But my all-time favorite was naigabor. Naigabor. It turned out to be... Did you go to the same class? Neighbor. So I was very frustrated with Allah. I remember that night in the fall of 1997, 20 years old, after Salaat al-Ishaah. I was very desperate, I made a desperate Dua to Allah, I said, "Ya Allah, anta rabbul alameen." You know, I'm struggling with my English. You created the heavens and the earth, you created the galaxies, you created Pakistan, you know? So Insha Allah, helping me with my English is easy. And I promise you, if you help me with my English, I'm going to... I'm going to use it to teach people about Islam and about the Quran. So alhamdulillah, Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, Kareem. He opened the doors for me. Three years later, I graduated top of the entire English department. And shortly after, I was appointed as a professor to teach Islam in English at Al-Azhar in Egypt. So alhamdulillah, we translated the Quran five different times. The first one was from Mecca and Medina in the English language and also French, under the supervision of the Sheikh. And this is when I met him back in 2002 and 2003 and 2004. Alhamdulillah. Then we did the Clear Quran in English, the Clear Quran for Da'wah. We tried to make it easy and accessible. So we set some goals because, alhamdulillah, at Al-Azhar, we studied different translations of the Quran. And I don't want to break your hearts, but the sad reality is, Muslims are probably the only faith community on the planet who would accept and celebrate translations of the Quran by people who are not qualified to translate and people are not even Muslim. So let me give you an example. Let's say, my name is Mustafa Chodari. I'm from Pakistan or India. And I go to the church or the synagogue to the Christians and Jews and tell them, "You know what? I don't believe in your faith. I don't follow your book. I never studied the Bible. I don't know anything about translation. But somehow, mysteriously, I managed to pull off the best translation of the Bible." Do you think they will accept it? Of course not. But we accept translations by Muslims, let's say, who are accountants, people who have other jobs, people who are not even Muslim in Jada'ud and others, Islamophobes, who hated Rasulullah SAW so much. Wallahi, I go to masjids and I see, you know, translations by Ahmadiyah, translations by non-Muslims, very faulty translations. In Urdu, we say, Ni'm Hakim Khatrajan, Ni'm Mulla Khatra Iman. Half a doctor is dangerous to your life and half a scholar is dangerous to your faith. So make sure when you read a translation of the Quran, make sure it's a good translation. Just like when someone falls sick, they go to the best doctor. When you read something about Islam, make sure it's a reliable work. Alhamdulillah, we have so many qualified imams. So this was the second one. We set some standards that the translation has to be easy, accessible, clear and fluid in the English language. And alhamdulillah, when we started working on the Clear Quran audiobook app, it wasn't a problem for us. So alhamdulillah, it featured the voice of the Sheikh, Sheikh Yasser Qadi, Sheikh Umar Sulaiman, many other shi'ukh, Mashallah, they were involved. They narrated the translation. It's very smooth and very easy. Let me give you one example. I remember two years ago, I was in Qatar. I was talking to Qatar Foundation about this translation. And they, the first question they asked, "There are so many other English translations out there. Why do you think you did a good translation?" And of course, I told them, as the Sheikh, Jazalak Khair, said, "There is no such thing as a perfect translation of the Quran. It doesn't exist." The only thing that is perfect is the Quran in Arabic. How do you expect an imperfect human being like me to translate the perfect word of Allah? Yeah, we love English and all, but Arabic is a very powerful language, very rich, and English is very limited, Subhanallah. So I told him, "How many countries hosted the World Cup before Qatar, 2022?" They said, "So many countries." And I told him, "Nobody did a better job than Qatar." Why? Because you learned from everyone that came. You learned from the mistakes and you tried to improve. And this is exactly what I did. Stand on the backs of giants. We learned from the mistakes. We tried to improve, alhamdulillah. Then we did the Clear Quran, Tafsir for Kids. It's the first Tafsirul Quran for kids, edited by kids, using illustration stories. Then we did the Clear Quran dictionary for non-Arab's who make up the majority of Muslims to understand the Quran in just four to six months. I remember I was leading Tarawiyah in Canada, Toronto. Khalas, four more minutes, Insha'allah. I was in Toronto, leading Salaatul Tarawiyah. And this dude, Pakistani guy, he came to me after Salaatul Tarawiyah and he started shouting at me. "Imam sa'ab, abki sad bahut mushkilay." "What's your problem, man?" I said, "What did I do?" First, I thought the biryani we searched for Iftaar in Ramadan was very spicy. But no, he said he couldn't understand the Qiraah in Tarawiyah. And that night, I remember, we recited Surah Yusuf. All the Arab people were crying. He had no clue. And this is why he was angry. And I told him, "Khair, Insha'allah." And we started working on the Clear Quran dictionary. Then we did the Clear Quran, Made Easy, first Tafsirul Quran for new Muslims. And finally, Insha'allah, briefly, I'll talk about this one.